What time's this two o'clock meeting starting?
Two o'clock.
I'd like to call and order the Sparks City Council meeting Monday, November 28, 2016, together with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Eiding.
Here.
And City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
If you'd all stand for the invocation speaker, we have with us Pastor Barbara West from the Sparks Nazarene Church, welcome Pastor West.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read this prayer, if you'll bow your heads with me, please. While the storm clouds gather far across the sea, let us pledge allegiance to a land that's free. Let us all be grateful for a land so fair, as we raise our voices in a solemn prayer. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies to the oceans white with foam, God bless America, our home sweet home. God bless America, our home sweet home. And God would you please bless these leaders that we've put in place for our city of Sparks, and guide them in their directions and decisions for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
You usually look very, very good, and you always lead us very well into the session, so we appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Mr. Dare, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The honor. Would you please join? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment, anyone who wants to speak under public comment, have no cards to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Agenda, anybody want to take out of, or anything out of order, or looking for motion? Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the agenda and submit it.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the, the agenda is outlined by Stephanie, further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the special and regular Sparks City Council meeting of November 14, 2016. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? If not, looking for motion. Mr. Lawson.
Who to approve the minutes as presented?
Second, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the minutes of special meeting of regular City Council meeting, November 14, regular meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to number seven, presentation by Griffles Biomat USA. Griffles, is that pronounced right who's doing this?
Yeah, that's correct, yes sir.
Come on up. Just give us your name for the record, and could you pronounce that, is it right or not?
Griffles, yes sir. So my name's Jerry Halverson, on behalf of Griffles and their child company Biomat USA.
Hi, my name is Mary Sabuco, and I'm a Senior Quality Manager for Biomat, here at me.
So we actually wanted to put together a little presentation for the community, because this is the first time we'll have a center in Sparks, so we have a little presentation for the screen, if you want to step that up. So for the, for people that don't know what plasma is, it's basically a component of blood. The long and short of it, it's the liquid portion, water and protein, it's a very simple substance, but a lot of people need it to have a quality way of life. I know if anybody's been affected by anybody with hemophilia, or any sort of genetic inherited diseases, or autoimmune diseases, but we treat those types of people, and it's all an in-house thing with full traceability. Because we, it's, we're fortunate enough to go ahead and collect the product from our valued donors, we compensate them for their time, and then we actually produce the pharmaceuticals in one of our plants in North Carolina or in LA. But as the slide says, we start out in 1940 out of Barcelona, it's been a family company, it's been in the Griffles' name ever since. And we're committed to helping patients through, providing them with the pharmaceuticals that they need to live an everyday life, that we kind of take advantage of as far as bleeding disorders, or things like genetic emphysema, that type of thing. So we always keep the patients in mind. We're one of the leaders, I know the slide says we are the world leader, but it's always a competition between the top three as far as reduction wise, and how many medications that we can provide. But the 160 donor centers that are in the United States right now, that's again off, because as you know, we're opening the center December 20th in Sparks. So we're constantly growing, and there's a huge push for this growth, and you know, why we have this audience with you today that we thank you for. So across the fleet, we average 26,000 donations per day. We have testing laboratories in Austin, Texas, like I say, in Los Angeles, we have another corporate facility, and in North Carolina. And one of the big things on this slide is the traceability that we provide. Every donation is tracked with a specific donor number, and that is traced to the whole process. So let's say that there is some sort of accountability issue, or there is a product quality issue at the end of the process, when it's getting blocked nine months later, 12 months later from the actual donation, we can actually trace that back to where it came from, what center it came from, the actual donor that provided. So just to touch on some of the actual medications that we do make, which is, you know, why we're all here right now. So primary immunodeficiency diseases, there's a myriad of, there's like 100-plus diseases that are treated, from genetic emphysema, there's pneumonia, and just in general, immune-suppressing infections. And we have products like our intravenous immunoglobulin that are given from everyday donors, from this very simple substance of water and protein, that we actually manufacture these, into these immunotherapies, to help people with these life-threatening diseases. The more common one, under hematology, would be like hemophilia A and B. Now, blood works, it's a clotting cascade, so if you're missing one of these proteins, again, you don't get to live that everyday life, you may have a joint bleed, or maybe if you have an actual accident, or you have to go under surgery, you know, you may need more of these proteins, and again, we elicit these proteins and fractionate it in our facility, and provide those for those patients. And then other genetic disorders, as far as, again, genetic emphysema, our pulmonology to help people breathe. So, and this can be obviously, the most, the biggest relation for this would be like emphysema, and a lot of people get that with like smoking, et cetera, but some of this can be genetically inherited. So we actually help these individuals with these lung disorders, because they have those damaged pathways in their lungs, and again, we use some of these therapies to provide them with the medications that they need. And then last, shock victims, as far as treating inflammation and that, from shock and severe burns. So there is a use we've tried to get in the community as far as tying with the VA, and trying to get support from them as well, our center medical physician also works at the VA, so we've, we're trying to partner with them heavily. But that decreases the permeability in your vascular system, again, treating burns, and again, helping people that may aren't on the genetic side of needing the medications, more of an emergency situation. And here's some of the numbers, again, why we're here today. So, and this is a blanket statement, so the 1,300 donations, that's for somebody that has some form of hemophilia, and now it's not all that drastic, we're not saying that every patient needs 1,300, but we fractionate it, and it takes a lot of donations to help a one person. And that just kind of puts the numbers in perspective, so one patient, 1,300 donations. And it goes down from there, from 900 to 130, for whatever immune deficiency it is. You know, for using IVIG, the funny thing about it is, some of the stuff we use as far as our intravenous immunoglobulin, we, it's not a diagnosis, we've just gotten a very good response, so it leaves the window open as far as some of the, the opportunities that plasma has to offer, especially with immune deficiencies. We just know that we've treated people with it, and they've had a very good response with it, and it's improved their quality of life or their outlook. It doesn't cure anything, but it just goes to show you that it, the window is, is open with some of the technologies, some of the research that, that we do, and the medications we provide for our patients. So this talks about the actual community. So plasma donors are right here in the, in the community, and they're everywhere. We, we try to, like I say, we go to the VA, we've gone to the schools to try to recruit people. The biggest thing is we're trying to fight, it seems like there's a negative connotation on plasma donation, because we compensate people with money. You know, and I, we've tried to combat that, and that's one of the things we've tried to do for, for a few years now, that you're not just coming there to just sell your money for 25 bucks, that's totally not what it's about. People donate for whatever their reason is, but the funny thing is actually working at the center and seeing somebody donate because their son's over in Iraq, versus the person that needs to provide diapers for their child. Not my question to ask, the biggest thing that we can provide is a safe screening. So that's why your first visit takes a while, your first time, you're going through a health history questionnaire with trained medical professionals, nurses, paramedics, EMTs, and we make sure that every person that comes to that donor is suitable to be able to donate, because the people that we're giving the medications to, anyway, are obviously, they're sick, they're not getting it for a good reason. God forbid, we need to give them something else, so that's why a thorough screening is done. And to add on to that, it talks about, it mentions we need two donations, because again, our, our regulations dictate that we cannot release that first one until we've gotten our viral marker testing back, and then we can release into the general pool. How it works, the best picture is had a, had a penis like a brewery. In LA, we send all of our plasma there, it all gets mixed together, and it's tested at each fraction. We've only had to ever throw away in the history of our company, one large batch, because one of the, one of the testings popped as far as positive for antibody. So it kind of speaks to the company, and that was about two months in the fractionation process, when it had another nine months to go. Nine to 12 months total, from the actual donation to when it gets turned to do a medication. And this goes over the steps, because the biggest thing we try to combat too is, it's a long time, your first time, but I cannot stress the fact that, you know, we are trying to get that image up, I don't know if you guys had a predisposed image as to what the plasma industry was all about, but we want quality, you know, healthy donors, and they go through that screening to make sure they are healthy. And that's why the visit takes a little longer your first time, you need to provide a certain amount of ID, and we, we check all this information against the national database, because there's national databases that I'm sure you guys know about, that keep track of HCV reactive donors, HIV reactive donors, and that's reported to the Health Department accordingly. So we do all this at the first visit to make sure that we are getting a peer and quality product, so that's why when we tell people that it takes a little longer their first visit, you know, there's some gripes and whatnot, understandably so, but ultimately it's for the safety of our patients, because that's our number one priority. And people can do it twice a week, it's a fantastic thing. You know, I, I'd love to say that everybody comes out there and they do it for the good of the patients, because they want to help somebody, that's not how it goes, some people have other means to do it, but it doesn't matter, they're in the facility anyway, and they're helping somebody. And then on top of that, it's more than just the donors and the patients. Depending on the size of the facility, you're employing anywhere from 40 to 70 individuals, depending on how big it is, so it's a really great opportunity that we have coming into Sparks, because we can actually help those families. We're not only helping the donors and the patients, we're also providing full-time work for those individuals as well, there's nothing wrong with that. Our company is very progressive, we actually have our own Academy of Plasma Pharesis, which is a college accredited, yeah, well, yeah, we got that too. And we put it on ourselves, and we fly our employees down to Arizona, North Carolina, all on the company's dime, we provide them with accredited courses. We send our nurses down there, our management staff, we have our quality staff go down there, and we fly in our physicians from, actually all over the country, and some of them from Spain, to come in and talk on these seminars. So that's one opportunity, we've also teamed up with College for America, and it's 100% paid for upfront, accredited degree for any employee that wants it. You know, all you have to do is obviously get the sign that you want to stay with the company for a certain amount of time, which is fair, but no questions asked, you write an entrance letter, and you can actually get your, I'm currently getting my bachelor's in healthcare management, all paid for by the company, online, and they, they really support you, and that, that, that's a huge thing. So like I say, the 160-plus centers across the, the United States, all employing around 40 to 50 people, so it's not just the people that are all, people think about are the patients, or the donors that may be receiving compensation, or getting gratitude from helping somebody, but it's also the employees at the, at the center. With that being said, besides the career opportunities that we do provide, we're infusing money into the community. So this is money that donors are getting to, they're providing goods for themselves, they're shopping. We also do a lot of community awareness, awareness, we're actually tying in with the Washoe County School District, because we saw that there had been some budgetary crisis, so we tried to reach out to them and say, hey, here's a way that maybe we could set up a fund for you, if you really want to volunteer. Take all your, you get paid after every donation, take them to a special fund, you guys can put it towards whatever you need to. So we've reached out to the community, Washoe County School District, we're working with the VA right now, like I said, through our physician, and we go to a lot of the schools, and we try to tie in with like the Fire Academy and whatnot, because I know they have to do a lot of volunteer work, and we've had a good reception from them, also with employing some of their EMTs, because we have a great opportunity to be an EMT advanced, and get a, get, get in here, and it's a pretty competitive wage rate, you know, for those guys as well. So we've really tried to intertwine with the community, we didn't really get to do that with the starting of the Reno Center, so we're trying to do it right this time, and, and talk with you guys, and just get the message out there, that a lot of this money does come back to the actual community, and the city in which you're in. But that's about it.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I don't know, I know when somebody gives a pint of blood, that's about all they can give at one time, do you take it out of, do you draw the blood and then take the plasma out of it, or can you take the plasma right out of the patient?
Because we centrifuge it right there, hold it hooked up to the machine, the donation takes about an hour, so we spin it, and naturally the solids and liquids separate, and you can do it twice in a seven-day period.
Okay, but you do take, you do take the blood out, right?
Yeah, but we give it back.
You give it back to them after you spin it out, okay.
That's why you can basically do it twice a week versus once every eight weeks.
Sure, okay, makes sense.
So that's kind of our pitch as well, we tell people, hey, you're, and it makes them feel good too, because they're not donating blood once every eight weeks, you get to come in twice a week, and it doesn't hurt to make a little extra money.
Okay, no good deal, thank you.
Can you, anybody else, questions? Go ahead, Don.
So I was thinking about donating, actually, so if I went in my first day, am I like three hours waiting, or what's the time period?
Well, that's the thing, because we're at, we quote, two and a half to three hours, preferably two and a half. Now, if it's toward the end of the day, I'm not a big fan of giving people false numbers, what corporate wants you to say, I'm going to shoot you straight and say, because we take walk-ins, first come, first served, and we don't deny anybody. We'll usually leave the facility at nine o'clock, when we close at six o'clock on the weekdays. So we're going to stay there, if you guys come in, but it's usually about a two and a half hour wait, just because you go through that thorough screening. After that, 90 minutes.
And then how about after that, after your first screening, it's like an hour, right?
Exactly, yeah, hour, hour to 90 minutes. And we, you know, there's obviously corporate standards, so we try to hold true to that, because if we take too long, people aren't going to come back.
Mr. Dare.
You mentioned that there's 55 jobs. Are you, have you already started hiring for them, are they open now, you said, when is it open?
December 20th.
December 20th, so are you hiring right now, and how would somebody be a part of that? Not that I'm looking for a job, but.
You haven't got time, have you? We could use it.
No, yeah, it's online at Griffles Plasma, but yes, we're currently, we're still recruiting, you know, and unfortunately, there, you know, there's turnaround everywhere you go, or, so we, we've already staffed and trained for that center, so basically, we're working with double the amount of staff out of our Reno Center, because we obviously had to get all of our licenses underway, and have experienced people move over to the Sparks Center, because we're going to be going 100% as of the 20th.
So if any of our, is there any room, if any of you are Sparks citizen now, we're looking for work?
Yes, sir.
They should go on and check that out, is there certain requirements they have to have?
No, and it goes up from there, like if you'd like to be part of management, obviously a degree doesn't hurt. The medical staff, you have to have your state of Nevada licensure, but we do have base openings as far as our donor center technicians, and even our phlebotomists will train in-house. A lot of people are surprised to hear that you don't need any training to become a phlebotomist.
Fantastic.
A lot of entry-level positions.
Yeah, we have a great training program, so, yeah, I'm coming in to, with the company, not knowing anything about plasma, so I had to go through a six-month training, so that's actually out in North Carolina as well.
We're glad you saw the light and came over to Sparks, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
One more question, I know they have blood type O, a positive, is it the plasma, does it get the same way, or everybody's plasma is the same?
Universal, that's the severity of it.
Universal.
That's the severity of it.
Great. Thanks folks, appreciate it, I saw the big sign down there in the front of the building, and I was wondering what it was, I'm very pleased that you came on down and explained your business to us, I hope you're very successful.
We're excited, thank you for your time.
One more question, one more.
So are you having like a grand opening on December 20th?
We're going to be open for business, they have a scheduled, you know, actual grand opening with events and whatnot, we might have a DJ come out, that should be the following month, but that's when we're open for business and whatnot, kind of like a soft opening, I guess you could say.
Okay, so are you going to let us know if you have an opening that you would like any of us to be there?
Oh yeah, definitely.
Ribbon cutting?
Yeah, I know, we have that, I think, scheduled for next year, during spring, I believe, but you know, I'm not 100% sure with that, but definitely we'll let you guys know.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
They picked the heck of a date, the week before, the Christmas week, so yeah.
Welcome to Sparks.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to consent items, 8-1 to 8-3, everyone on a poll, a consent item? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion then. Mr. Smith?
Moved to approve consent items 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3.
Mr. Dare?
I second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve consent items 8-1 to 8-3, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, moving on, general business 9.1, consideration and possible approval of amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement AC 5172, between the redevelopment agency, the city of Sparks, and the SW-Dash Quarry FBS LLC, to extend the deadlines for closing escrow and the commencing construction on the agency mixed-use parcels APN 03231422, and APN 03234123. Mr. Arnellis.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, members of the city council, I am Armando Arnellis, your Assistant Community Services Director. So this agenda item is proposed amendment number one to the DDA between the redevelopment agency, the city of Sparks, and SWD Quarry FBS LLC, which is, you know, essentially an entity created by Silverland Development and Jay Witt. The original development agreement was approved in July of 2015, granted the developer the ability to acquire and develop eight parcels from the agency, six of which are referred to as the agency residential parcels, so those are the ones outlined in red here on the, on the exhibit one here, so it's these two plus these four, and then there were the agency mixed-use parcels, which are little, little, don't pop quite as much, but it's these two parcels in front of the theater, that have the cross, you know, have to cross after patterns. The, the DDA provided for two escrows for sale of the parcels, the, the first escrow was for sale of the, the agency residential parcels, again, the ones in red here, and that escrow was completed last year, and the developer has or is constructing all of the improvements that were specified in the development agreement, and those consisted of 10 residential buildings containing 200 apartments, plus a clubhouse and a swimming pool. The second escrow is for closing the sale of the, the two agency mixed-use parcels, again, the two in front of the theater, and so what the amendment calls for is extending the deadlines for closing the second escrow and commencing construction on these parcels. The closing deadline would be extended from December 31st of this year, through June 30th of 2017, and the deadline for the developer to begin construction would be extended from December 31st, 2016, to July 14th, 2017, so essentially, the six-month extension, and then a couple of weeks extra beyond closing date for start of construction. Per the terms of the development agreement, the developer is to purchase these parcels at sites for mixed-use buildings that would have ground floor retail restaurant uses, and then a row, or a floor of apartments above that. So, but the idea was here that, you know, at the, at the mouth of the theater, by the fountain, these were logical places for a ground floor restaurant, you know, that would be complementing, complimentary to the, the use of the theater, and then again, there's these other parcels along to the south on either side of the plaza, and the idea was to have retail restaurant uses, you know, basically all the way from the theater to Victorian Avenue on either side of the plaza. The reason staff and the developer are requesting the extension of these deadlines, is that the, the theater, which was operated by Cinemark until September 29th of this year, has of course closed, and you know, we can't tell you at this juncture whether, and if so, when, you know, that theater may resume operations, or when, you know, some other use might be identified for that, for that property. Those, those restaurant retail uses, you know, it was always envisioned would be, would require, in order to be successful, a complimentary use in, in the theater building, or the theater or something else, something that would drive traffic to retail restaurant uses. And so understandably, Mr. Witt does not want to proceed with constructing the mixed-use buildings until the future of that, of that property is better understood. So the proposed extensions would be intended to give, you know, the, the city and agency additional time to, to try to, working with Sayafi Enterprises to determine what's the future of that property is, and then it would also grant Mr. Witt additional time to decide if he wants to proceed with those, with construction of those two buildings. So, staff is recommending approval of amendment number one to the Fountain House DDA, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best to address them. It does not have anything to do with bridges, the bridges parcels are, to the use of these, it's the one in front of the parking structure and the one here, and just so you know, so just, in case you have, where, yeah, sorry.
No, you're not used to just answering yes or no to us up here, but that's good for me. Mr. Lawson?
So it's just the two mixed-use are?
These two parcels right here, yeah.
So my other question is, the theater has an option on the parking garage until December of 17?
They don't have, Councilman Lawson, they don't have an option per se, they have, we, you, the council approved that parking agreement with Sayafi Enterprises, it basically commits the city to provide free parking for the theater, for a theater specifically, and that agreement would lapse on December 31st of 2017, if the theater has not been reestablished.
So with that in mind, my question is, wouldn't it make more sense to extend this until December 31st of 17?
It, it could, I mean, I think it's certainly an option, you know, frankly, what, what we were contemplating was that we would provide a six-month extension, see if we understand where, where things are, you know, four, five months from now, if necessary, we would bring you another extension, but certainly if there was a preference.
I don't see any reason, I don't think six months is going to help us determine what's going to happen, so personally, I would say let's run it concurrent with the parking lot agreement, and if he wants to start sooner, great, if he needs to come back next December, then, then we'll look at it then, but I, I don't think six months is really accomplishing anything for him or us.
You know, to me, it doesn't really matter, I'm just interested in, I think we need a monthly update, or quarterly update, or something, six months, 12 months, to me, doesn't make, I don't care, I just want something so we can keep the heat on them to let us know what's going on, so if we need to do something in the interim, we can act on it or whatever. Ms. Bybee.
I guess I'm really just echoing what Councilman Lawson said, my, my initial question when I looked at this is, six months is hardly anything, especially since the theater is, and, and that property is in limbo right now. So for six months, for me, just didn't seem like enough time, and my question to you, I guess, and on to Jay, was, is that enough time, or do we need to, and I agree with Councilman Lawson, it would make sense to go to December, with the option of, of starting building before that, but, but six-month window with so much doubt on, on the movie theater property, I, I think, and we could come back again, but that was just my thought, that it was not enough time, and I'd like to allow them more if, if needed.
You know, I think, if I may, I'll just explain the, the thinking behind the six months, if the theater is in fact going to be operational by December 31st of next year, we will know by the end of June, because they, you know, they would, they would have to be, you know, making plans, and you know, et cetera, et cetera, proceeding, but that, having said that, I'm, I'm not averse to, you know, it's the council's pleasure to making this a 12-month extension versus a six-month extension.
Only downside, maybe, Armando, is if something doesn't happen in six months, and we have somebody come out of the blue that has a really great project or something, and wants to jump in and buy this, are we restricted for six months from selling it?
Yes, well, if you.
Not that that's going to happen, and not that Mr. Witt has not done a very, very good job, because I think he has, but having said that, if somebody comes in July and says, you know what, here's all the money, I'm going to do this, I'll buy the property, let's get it done.
That would be what you would be forsaking, that option.
Okay, any more questions? Looking for motion, I guess then. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement of a. of SWD Quarry FBS LLC.
Do a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Abbott, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve the nine point ones outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
And that was for six months?
Okay. Thanks, Armando, appreciate it. All right, fight fans, here we go. Nine point two, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of changes to the city's boards and commissions appointments from the following pool of candidates listed in alphabetical order, Abbott, Bybee, Dare, Lawson, Martini, Smith, for possible action. Go ahead, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record, this is kind of time and place that we do every two years, after the election process, to kind of true up and adjust our membership to our boards and commissions for the elected members of the city of Sparks. So what you're gonna have in front of you is, there's a matrix that will be up on the board, you did receive a paper copy as well, that shows the current assignments for all the incumbents that are on the council, and with two new members on the council, wards one and five's assignments were cleared and put into a parking lot. The normal process that you've used in the past is for us to look with the incumbents and to decide if there are any other boards or commissions that you no longer want to participate on, and then that would therefore move those to the parking lot for discussion. Once we have everything in the parking lot, then it's, you talk amongst, you're basically talking amongst yourselves under the direction of the mayor, and we just go through the list in alphabetical order, and remove those until hopefully everything that's in the parking lot is now assigned to one of the elected officials, one of the six elected officials. You will be assisted by your staff, Cindy will actually be working on the computer up on the board to keep track of the matrix as you have your discussions and you finalize things, she will move those from the parking lot to the matrix inside one of the six elected positions. Also, your clerk has a binder that has as much information as we have on the different boards and commissions, so hopefully if there is a particular question that maybe someone's not able to answer as a current incumbent, hopefully you will have that research. And so the idea here was so that you'll talk amongst yourselves, you'll come to some conclusion. The agenda item itself is designed to where that if, in fact, you wanted to nominate and vote on every single position, you could do so, we've never done that in the past, there's not been a need to do. What we normally do is come to kind of verbal consensus, you talking amongst yourselves, and then once we get to the end of the day, with everything having a home, normally there is a single motion, second, and a single vote, and when that happens, we save that document that memorializes what it is that the mayor and council wanted to do for boards and commissions for the next cycle. So we'll go as quickly or as slowly as you would like to go, but this is one of the few times, if you will, that the discussion is yours, the decisions, of course, are always yours, and then we'll just do the best we can to keep up, so the only thing that would slow us down is if, for processing purposes, we need to slow down just to move some things, Cindy will let you know and go from there. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna return to the dais, and I'll turn over the discussion to you.
All right, kids, here we go, we'll start with my stuff. Commissions, you let me know when you're ready there, Ms. Cindy? And I'll tell you what I'm gonna, I'd like to park. Maybe some of who I'd like to park, but I can't do that. Ready? Debt management commission, please. Regional transportation commission alternate number two, I believe now that's the policy that the mayor cannot be on the RTC, is I correct?
We're trying to get that changed.
Okay, so we do. Reno Sparks joint sewer coordinating committee. How we doing, Dare? All right? So let me know, you okay for next one? Tourism and market, tourism, tur- tourism facilities and revitalization steering committee. And I believe that's the name of that, too, for me. Mr. Smith, or Mr., well, we go down.
Mr. Dare.
What, Dare?
So you want the ones I'm willing to give up? Okay, debt management commission alternate. Regional planning governing board alternate. Western Nevada Development District alternate.
You had three, I was right.
What's that?
You had three?
That I gave up, yeah.
Is that it, Ron?
Yeah, that's it, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lawson?
Okay, I wanna give up EDON Board of Directors. Truckee River Flood Management Authority alternate. Washoe County Senior Services.
That's it?
Those three.
Ms. Bybee?
Are you ready, Cindy? Okay. Parks and Recreation Commission. Redevelopment Agency Vice Chair, 'cause I'll be looking for chair, so I guess I've gotta park, park that, park the vice chair?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so park the vice chair. On the RTC alternate, I would do one or two, so I don't know if you wanna park that, and then we'd come back to... Yeah, we can park that, I would, I would do either, so if you wanna park that, and we can discuss that. And then Western Regional Water Commission. That's it.
So let me ask a question, Western Regional Water Commission.
Ed was appointed and then couldn't-
There's a conflict.
There's a conflict, so you gave me that appointment in the spring.
That's what I was, I couldn't remember.
So I was filled in for Ed's position on-
Couldn't remember how that worked, no problem.
On whatever date it was supposed to be.
Well, and I might suggest that you keep that Western Regional Water Commission appointed by Tom Wolf until we get that straightened out.
Who, me?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna do that, I don't wanna give that-
Oh, you didn't give that up, okay.
I'm not gonna give that up, because I don't think that's what I wanna do, but that's right. Okay, so that's, everybody's got, is in the parking lot, right, now, right? Okay, so, I guess maybe the best way to do this, Steve, is, wanna go down mine and vote on those that are okay with everybody, that the ones that I want, or do you wanna wait till the end, maybe?
Well, I think that's kind of at the pleasure of the board, if you will.
Would it make more sense if we voted on each, whatever we, whatever we wanna keep, if everybody's okay with that, let's vote on each person's what they wanna keep, okay? That's one, two, three, four, or one, yeah, one, two, three, four. Then we'll go to what's left of the parking lot and put those over there, is that okay with you guys? Anything, is there a downside to this, Cheryl, maybe you see, no?
The process is up to the council on this and how you wanna handle it.
First, and that's not the way we discussed it, but I think for some reason that makes more sense to me, I don't know why.
It's whatever makes sense with the council, we're happy to do that.
Talk me off the ledge if I'm wrong, yeah.
We're good, we're good to go, just give Cindy a moment to catch up.
Yeah, we should not, you're right, okay, all right, let's do this, then, let's vote on mine, I cannot make a motion, so I would appreciate it if somebody would make a motion for me to keep the legislative team, Nevada League of Cities Board of Directors, which I'm the president of now, regional planning governing board, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, Truckee River Flood Management Authority, and Western Regional Water Commission, is that what I have, Cindy, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, if somebody would make that a motion, I'd appreciate it.
I move to approve the aforementioned commissions and boards that the mayor has opted to retain.
Do a second, Mr. Lawson?
Sorry.
Okay, moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the mayor's appointments, any further discussion? Are we gonna have the voting board up, or can we just, you want us to vote?
We could do verbal.
Well, it's up there, so, all, please vote, sorry. Passes unanimously, okay, so that one's down, now we go to Mr. Smith.
Okay, I wanna keep Mayor Pro Tem. Regional Transportation Commission, I'll be chairman of that in January. Sparks Tourism and Marketing Committee, be chairman of that. Truckee Meadows Water Authority. Truckee River Flood Management Authority, I'm the chairman of that, and Western Regional Water Commission. So there's six there.
Okay, any questions, looking for motion, Mr., oops, Mr. Smith? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Mr. Dare?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve those wanted by Mr. Smith, are we okay there, Cindy, got them all? Are we good or not?
Okay.
I'm sorry, all right, pass unanimously, okay, great. Next would be Mr. Lawson.
Okay, I wanna keep regional planning governing board, Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, and Western Nevada Development District, which I am the president of currently, I'm also the vice chair of the RSCBA.
Questions on those, not looking for a motion. Moved, approved, do a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve Mr. Lawson's boards, are we up to speed there, Cindy?
Yep.
Okay, please vote. Passes unanimously. Ms. Bybee?
Okay, I would like to keep the Capital Funding Protection Committee, the Oversight Committee for School Facilities, and those go together, those two commissions are the same, different commissions, but those have to stay together. The Regional Planning Governing Board, I'm chair of that, and I guess that's it, because my others I'm going, coming back to, so just the three.
Okay, questions? Motion. Go ahead, Mr. Dare.
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve Ms. Bybee's boards, are we okay, Cindy? Please vote. Passes unanimously, okay. So now, we're off to the parking lot, do we, I guess we can start one by one at the top, tell me where we're at there, Ms. Cindy?
Capital Funding Protection Committee is the first one. That is the one that goes along with the Oversight Committee for School Facilities, both of those will be assigned together.
Any volunteers for that one, Mr. Dare, Mr. Dare, Mr. Abbott?
Who, which one you want to speak?
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I, with my background of 15 years with private education, I would like to be a part of this, I think I can bring something to the table, I work with budgets, and part of my role is not a projection, but also construction, all the stuff we've done on Bybee, on, uh, Bybee, on, um, very, would make sense, I think.
Agreed, so, so we wanna enter that into Mr. Dare's parking lot, or we're gonna file the boards? And that would be oversight and capital funding, right, Sharon?
Yeah, those are both together. Now, are we doing these, so as we do this, do we just move them over and then make a final approval? Is that how we're gonna do that?
So, we have two on that board, do we not?
Yeah, two.
Yeah, two people.
Julia was the other member.
Yeah, there's two people on that, so, so tell me what's next there, Dare.
Debt Management Commission?
Debt Management Commission, okay, that was mine, let me just explain debt management, that's one, all three entities are involved in that, plus the GID at Incline Village. It only meets quarterly, about that, have one meeting for sure per year. Anytime there's some debt that's gonna be created by one of the entities, that, like a bond or something like that, has to go through that committee to make sure there's bonding, that that personal, that entity has the bonding capacity to let those bonds, and it has to be approved by that committee. We also have to check to make sure it's not gonna affect our cap of property tax or any of those kind of things, and other than that, it hasn't been very active lately, so it's not gonna take a lot of time, I guess is what I wanna say.
Do you wanna know what days it meets on Gino, just?
It meets on the, like, the second or third Friday of the month at 11 o'clock of the quarter, of the, of the, March, whatever the quarter meeting is, March and from there, so it's four times a year, on a Friday at 11 o'clock. Hasn't been very active lately, again, because nobody's been really buying bonds and things. Down the road, as things get moving, it could be a very active and a very important committee for someone to sit on. I've been on there about 10 years, really haven't had many things to vote on or that have really affected anything that would affect any of the entities, so, there's where it lies, it's, I think it's a good chance for somebody to get to know the other people and other entities that are working on those kind of committees, because there's somebody from every entity, I think it's important for all of us to be on a committee that has to do with all three entities or with Incline Village or the school board, so, there it is, anybody that wants to jump in, it's not a big commitment.
I'll take it.
Okay, sure, I think that'd be good learning for you there, Donald, it really is.
And that's for the, not the alternate, for yours, right?
Yeah, that's for the member that will be sitting on that committee, yes. So the next meeting they have, you will be, they will let you know what it is, and you will be sworn in, you have to be sworn in, so, okay, what's next?
Debt Management Commission alternate.
Okay, pretty well figured that one out, anybody wanna be the alternate? Less commitment than-
I've been on that for 10 years, and I've never been to a meeting, so.
So anybody wanna, anybody wanna jump in?
I don't mind, if nobody else wants to, I'm hanging out with them, everyone's warm.
Okay, that's good, okay. What's next there, Cindy?
EDON Board of Directors.
There we go, EDON Board of Directors, that's leaving.
Yep, they meet Thursday, Thursday of each month, at 7:30 in the morning till 9:00, and good board to be on for economic development. I'm trying to shift my, my focus more to the tourism and marketing side of it, so we can get some more money for the city of Sparks, but great board to be on, the leaders of the community and all business owners.
I would be interested in EDON, I like working with Mike and his team, and kind of the, I think it's an important, really important board for Sparks to have, you know, good, strong representation on that, and like that group, like what they're doing, so I am interested, and on any of these, if we have, like, more than one of us, do we just park, park our names on it, and then we come to a vote later? Okay, that was just me.
Anyone else interested in EDON?
I would be, but being that I'm in the junior councilman, actually, I have no problem, I mean, if this is what you'd like to, I don't know if there's an alternate or any of those kind of things, there's nothing like that?
No, but you're welcome to go to any board meeting, well, no, you're not to the board meetings, but to any event that EDON has, and they invite that, and Cindy makes our reservations for us.
So if you didn't, when you didn't attend meetings, did you just?
Well, we had Steve there.
Okay, oh, 'cause Steve's on the board now.
So one, one statement, if you're interested in it, throw your name, and if you're not that interested, say so, we have one people, one person that wants it, and another one that may want it, there's discussion after this to have it, so it's up for grabs, I'm not trying to be, say anybody's better than the other one, but, Mr. Driscoll, go ahead.
Just some clarification, I do sit on the executive board of EDON as well as the board, I represent Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County, the governmental pieces of it, in addition, obviously, we have conversations with U.S. electeds with things that go on from that standpoint, so I am there in both, in a dual capacity to strengthen what Sparks does as a representative, both of the smaller, smaller board and the larger.
So we got two in for that, or one?
Two.
Okay, you have those down, Dare and Bybee, okay, what's next?
Information Technology Steering Committee.
Information Technology Steering Committee?
Yes, sir.
Anyone?
Is there any info on that? Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Steve.
This was something that was done well before the recession, and before the, after coming out of the recession, that the council developed the Refresh Program. We've not met for five or six years, because there's actually no need now, we deal with this during the budget process, and so it is one that I can suggest could be abolished by the council, and we just deal with this during the capital improvement program portion of the budget discussion.
Done. Done and done, next? Done and done, next?
I'll make a vote to abolish.
Second?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a motion in the second row of favor? Opposed, passes unanimously, moving on.
Gino got elected, Gene.
It's, it's his commission.
You asked me to do away with it, we'll do away with it, it's done, done deal, go ahead.
Legislative team.
That's, that's one that I want to be on.
Okay, I think that's a good choice, on Mr. Lawson's, everybody else? Okay, done on Mr. Lawson's. And then we'll, we'll have to re-vote on that, that's okay. Next?
Parks and Rec Commission.
Parks and Rec wants to be a Parks and Rec, good commission, it's, uh, stuff we need done.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
Okay, done and done. Next?
Redevelopment Agency Chair.
Ms. Bybee?
Oh, that would be me.
Hey, wake up.
I'm Friday, never heard of that.
Anyone else wanna be, uh?
Yeah, I would like, I would, having vice chair, uh, this year, or the last two years, uh, I'd like to move into that chair, chairman position.
Vice chair? Anyone else, I mean, chair? Chair, yes, chair.
Chair.
Okay, anyone else? No. Next?
Okay, Redevelopment Agency Vice Chair.
Okay, Vice Chair.
I would be interested, um, we work with 39 North, there's a group down there that we are there, I, my only question, I know it's Ward One, a lot of that, so I, um, we all work together, I know, trying to make sure the city's great, I do believe that having a strong downtown makes our, our city safe and wonderful and so important, so I'd be very interested in that.
Okay, Mr. Dare, who else? And it's not necessarily that it has to be the Ward One person, uh, it has to do with your, uh, has to do with your expertise and what you wanna do, what you've done in the past, or, does anyone else wanna be vice?
Can you go down to the vote on it?
Sure.
Does anyone wanna jump in on it?
Yeah, no offense, I'll just.
No, 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 that's not what it's about.
So I was in trouble. I know, already, second.
This, this is not a personal deal, okay, just remember that, it's not personal, it's what you'd like to represent the city, and there's nothing wrong with that. Except you can't be mayor, I'm sorry.
Yet.
Yes, yes, thank you. Today.
Two years.
Who else, next, next, now, you've got those?
Regional Planning Governing Board, alternate.
Regional Planning Governing Board, alternate?
I was that, I'll take it again if nobody else, if they don't want it, if somebody else wants it, grab it.
Let me say something about Regional Planning Governing Board, I elected, I've been on the Regional Planning Governing Board since nineteen ninety-nine, uh, if I had my druthers, I would just get off of it, but I, I don't want to this year, because we need some, uh, what do I wanna say? Not, not expertise, we wanna have some.
Story about that.
There you go, yeah. History from Sparks, we're gonna need some representation from Sparks, from people that know it, go with this going on there, like Charlene and Ed and maybe even me sometimes. So I wanna stay on that for a year until the legislature's over, till we get through the bumps that we might be going through, I'm not trying to pat myself on the back or anything, but it's just something I would like to do until that's over, and then I would like to turn it over at the end of the year to the alternate, maybe, or somebody else that would be interested, because I think it would be good to have a year's experience on regional planning before you have to jump in, so, just my thoughts. Anybody wanna be on regional planning? I said I would. Okay.
Done, good.
Good.
Madison, just somebody? I, well, I just own Donald's history, he actually knows the area quite well.
I'll do it. Think, think, when I'm off.
That's what I was hoping would happen with you.
Oh, sorry, didn't need to tell you.
I'm like, I'm daggering you, bro.
No, we can just make suggestions.
Yeah.
Pay attention, which, you gotta pick this stuff.
That's why I'm single.
And I'm over, been single for a while, probably, so, okay. Thank you, Donald, good job. Next?
Regional Transportation Commission, alternate number one.
Anyone?
I'm interested.
Okay, anyone else? Done, next? Number two?
Regional Transportation Commission, alternate number two.
Uh, I'd be inter, yeah, I'd be interested in being the second alternate.
Anyone else? Done, next?
Reno Sparks Joint Sewer Coordinating Committee, alternate.
How about, um, the committee itself? I think I gave that up.
Oh, correct.
Let's do the number first. Okay, here's one again, I've been on for many, many years, don't usually attend the meetings, because my philosophy is that thing runs so well, and that committee runs so well, I don't wanna get a politician involved in it. Having said that, somebody else might wanna go to that. It's very, uh, it's a great committee to be on, you'll know exactly what's going on with ours, the water reclamation facility all the time, it's, uh, it's a very, very important, important committee, if I didn't have so much faith in our engineers and city managers, they would take care of what goes on there, I do keep track of what's going on, uh, I usually give my vote to somebody else as a proxy, and we've always done a good job at the sewer plant or, or, with the water reclamation facility, so, having said that, if you wanna get on that, it's a great committee to be on, if you wanna attend a meeting, which you probably should, unless you wanna get in the way of things that don't go, uh, let the staff do what they do best, the experts, so, that's my spiel, if somebody wants to be on, it's a great committee to be on, and you'll, you'll keep up to date with what's going on with our sewer facility.
I'll take it.
Anyone else?
I'm trying to.
There's no trying, you will. Anyone else? Okay, good, good, thanks, Donald, I think you'll, you'll appreciate that a lot.
I got that hint, that's.
Next?
Reno Sparks Joint Sewer Coordinating Committee, alternate.
Okay, alternate to what Donald would do, just in case he can't make the meetings. Just throw me on there again, I guess it's, it's no problem.
So Christopher raises his hand.
I don't mind.
Go ahead, go ahead, it's, yeah, that's fine, put Christopher, that's fine, doesn't matter, just try and expedite.
Sewer Appeals Committee.
Sewer Appeals, this is a very easy thing to do these days, used to be a meeting once a month, and you'd have people come in and crying about their sewer, and we'll shut their, we can't shut their sewer, but we're, got a collection and all that kind of stuff, but now it's done on, by email, it's very easy to do, uh, keeps you up to track, gives you an idea of how people in our community might be suffering through the economic times with problems and paying bills and things, it was kind of a wake-up call for me, uh, when I got on this committee, again, been on it for over ten years, probably, it's, uh, it's not a lot of work now, it's, uh, a lot of hard work, maybe, uh, get to, give some people that are really having a tough time, and get to, uh, maybe, uh, get rid of some penalties, can't get rid of the fees, the fees they have to pay, but we can, uh, get rid of their fee, their penalties and things for them, and it's kind of a feel-good kind of thing once in a while, so, that's, uh, that's the other thing, we've got it so streamlined now, that most people don't need to come to the meeting to plead their case, we talk to them before they even get there, and it's done by email, but it's, it's a pretty good process, pretty simple to do. And I think sooner or later, we're working on that to go to administrative kind of a process where the sewer committee will go away anyway, so, might be a part-time thing for a while, and then we'll be gone, so, uh, anybody interested? Go ahead, good, Donald, anyone else?
Okay, I got the sewer.
Sparks Tourism and Marketing Committee.
Sparks Tourism and Marketing, that's Tour, Tour Mark?
Yep.
That's one I wanna be on.
Okay, anyone else?
Coordinating the RSCBA.
Great, anyone else? Okay, next?
Okay, Tourism Facilities and Revitalization Steering Committee.
Uh, Armando, I don't know how many times more that's gonna have to meet coming up, but.
They'll meet periodically.
Okay, just a periodical thing, and what they have to do is, they have to make a recommendation or a plan about downtown plans to use the money we get from the RSCBA, is that correct, kind of?
Correct.
Doesn't meet very often, it's two people from the city, somebody from RSCBA, somebody from a casino, and three, no, one from Sparks, so that's about five people on the committee, okay? Uh, it's, I wanna say it's semi-important when it has to meet, because they make recommendations to the city council on how we would like to spend that money we get from RSCBA in the downtown area, and, uh, it's recommendation only, but it's important to give us recommendations.
There's two positions, correct.
I'd like to be one of those positions, Neil.
Okay.
I'd be interested.
I think that goes hand in hand to the RSCBA stuff.
Probably pretty well does, in Charlotte.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested, 'cause it ties in with redevelopment.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. I think we were doing good here, getting similar things together that we maybe never had before, that's what I'm, I kinda like that, so, what's next there?
Truckee Meadows Water Authority, alternate.
Okay, anyone? Let's say maybe lead into the door, very, very important commission, uh.
I'm interested.
Coming up in the years, and I'll be gone two years, so, Christopher, anyone else? Okay.
My only concern is there's a lot of these, they're all alternates, so, a lot, not all of them, but a few alternates, so, it's not all the time as we're gonna schedule it, but if it's alternates, then it's up, I would go.
Right. And usually if we're not gonna make a meeting on any one of these committees, we, we give you plenty of notice. Yeah. Plus, again, I, it's kind of, it's kind of good to be involved a little bit and watch what's going on for the future, you might wanna be on that committee, it's, I mean, we're talking about, when you're talking about water, it's pretty important stuff, so. All right, Christopher is there, okay, next?
Truckee River Flood Management Authority, Board of Directors, alternate.
Again, same thing, uh.
Very important.
Very important, I've been on it, Ron's been on, I've been on it from its inception, Ron's been on it for quite a while, he's the chairman, uh, I would, again, probably like to stay on that another year to see what happens, and then maybe turn it over to somebody to get a year's experience for the flood, again, that's a super important thing, and if you look.
I'm interested.
Anyone else?
I'm with all.
Okay, so we got those two, Donald and Christopher. Again, this is coming down to the point where, uh, Sparks really, if you look around, Sparks is the only one that's really done a whole lot of work and done some, something in the ground for the flood project, so, which is kinda sad that it's that way, but that's the way it is in the big city. Next, what's next there?
Washoe County District Board of Health.
I'm interested.
Okay, again, this is, this one's pretty important, uh, Steve, uh, Mr. Driscoll, give us, you know, we've got a lot of stuff going on there, Julia Ratty has done a terrific job representing us, and we need strong representation there.
Definitely need strong, um, representation, this one for a while will, um, require some study, 'cause you're gonna need to get up to speed on, on the technical and medical issues involved with the health department, EMS services, and other things, you have a very capable complementary person that you've appointed in, Dr. Novak, um, medical doctor, emergency room doctor, so, um, that helps provide some of the technical on top of working with the medical officer. Um, we have been a leader on this particular organization for a while, um, sometimes the hard decisions need someone that's willing to step up, and with Dr. Novak and our, um, previous members, um, we've actually been leading. Your fire department provides a lot of background and backup for the EMS component, I also am on the EMS Oversight Committee, um, board as your representative through the inter-local agreement, so there's quite a bit of support, quite a bit of ability to get up to speed. It is something that, um, we need someone who's willing to be committed to it and understand it, and be willing to be strong on it, on things that they may be less than a hundred percent comfortable with, but we'll do the best to make you as comfortable as we can and, until you're, you're feeling up to speed, so, we could use some help on this one.
Someone to stick their nose in there and fight, so, okay, Christopher, anyone else? Okay. Next, Ms. Cindy?
Washoe County Senior Services Board of Trustees.
Okay.
This one's one I've given up, it's an advisory board, so, the only good news is you get to meet the seniors and hear their issues, and that is, uh, they call it the silver tsunami, with all the baby boomers retiring, they are actually affecting our planning for the next, uh, twenty years, so, if you're new, I would suggest you be on this, 'cause it's, it will, you'll learn a lot in a short period of time.
And they're trying to put together a citizens, a senior citizens advisory committee, so you have a lot to do with that.
Yeah, for Sparks.
Anyone, uh, don't forget, I'm gonna be a senior here pretty quick, so.
Donald.
You, that ship already sailed.
It did, a long time ago, so.
Donald raised his hand over here.
I think there's three of us that are seniors at this table.
Well, I'm a senior senior.
Oh, or.
All right, Donald, anyone else? Good, that, I think you'll, you'll, you'll fit in very well there, Donald, early in the year. Uh, what's next, Cindy?
Western Nevada State District, alternate.
So, this is the, uh, nine counties, um, of northern Nevada, we're all together, I'm the president of that, we just need an alternate for it, uh, Christopher, you serve as the citizen liaison right now.
Which I have to come off.
Correct, so.
Should I just watch over and hang out, or is this something somebody else wants to do, I'm, I don't mind hanging.
You know, I, I was the alternate here, and, um, ever since Ed's been the, the president of that, I've never had to go, he always goes to the meeting, so it's a, but you're, you're familiar with it, I think he'd be a good fit.
I think it's good to stay on it, Christopher, if you would stay on it.
Yeah.
I would, I would appreciate if you would.
Can't hurt.
Did you know what's going on?
Can he stay on as a citizen, or no, you gotta?
No, he can't be now, he's elected.
But you can, you can, we can.
He could be our alternate, and then we can appoint, we, we need to appoint a citizen representative from Sparks.
Good, yeah, that's good, that's a good deal.
Yeah, since you know what's going on, that'd be good.
Next?
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Who took Western Nevada's? Western Regional Water Commission.
Say that again, I'm sorry?
Western Regional Water Commission.
And that one is for, from who?
Appointed by Sparks.
Oh, okay, all right.
That was me, that was Ed's that became mine, and I was putting in.
Western Regional Water Commission, again, uh, it's all about water, uh, it's, it's, it's important, yes, I, my feelings is it's run its course, 'cause the legislature put it into effect to, uh, make the consolidation of Washoe County Water and Tamwa happen. It's happened, it's a done deal, I was in favor of getting rid of this committee, 'cause it might be a small duplication, but there's other people and other entities that don't think that's the truth, so, we need somebody to be on there to protect our interests, uh, in, in the region, I, who's on there, Ron is on there, and.
Yeah, I'm on there.
Uh, there, in theory, I was on there, but I'm in limbo right now, so we need another representative.
Let me see, who's got the flooding project all with water, yeah?
Donald? Okay, sure, that's good. That, that's good, it'll, it'll, it'll get you, again, up to speed on water and stuff, which, it's always good to know about what's going on with our water.
Whiskies for drinking and waters for fighting.
Water and service, that's right there.
So where else, Cindy?
I'm sorry?
Where else?
Well.
Done, we're done?
Um, you know what, I have a question, um.
Okay, question, go ahead.
To the city manager, uh, don't we have a new commission through Washoe County Animal Services that is one of our boards and commissions we're supposed to appoint someone to?
Yes, it's coming up, so we need to consider that one. It needs to be an elected official.
Now or when it comes out, when's it coming?
Mr. Crutts, please.
Whoever gets this is going to be leading the charge for feral cats, I think, or...
For the record, Neil Crutts, Assistant City Manager, the animal service, the Regional Animal Services Advisory Committee will be established late winter, early spring, so, you know, early '17, so we've got a few months. You could certainly, I think, if you want to, decide it today, but I don't think there's a, there's any rush. The county is going through their exotic animal code at this point in time, and they are struggling to come up with what they want to do, so it's kind of pushed their schedule back, so we've got time if we want to take it.
Why don't we wait till it comes up so whoever gets it can see the whole job title and duties and all that stuff when it meets and everything, so we don't want to jump into something you don't know what you might have time to do, so...
Okay, I just asked because it's something I was concerned about and interested in, but I can wait until we get the final language and we can make a decision then, so...
So, we've got this done, right Cindy? So why don't we do this now? Why don't you go over each one's jobs, starting with mine, and then...
We still got some more on the side.
The ones to vote on.
Yeah, and I suggest that Chris and Donald look at those two committees they're both looking at and maybe negotiate on this thing.
Okay, what do we got left, I'm sorry?
Edon Board of Directors between Charlene Bybee and Christopher Dare.
Okay, give us your spiel there, I guess, and then we'll, I don't know how else to do it, but vote, right? Draw cards, what do you want to do?
I think vote would probably be...
No, I'd like to draw cards, but voting's probably more...
We need a motion and a second, and then go from there.
Yeah, well, why don't you let them, why don't you let them just say a quick word about why they think they should be on there? Tommy?
I'm just, I'm interested in what Edon is doing. I think it ties into a lot of the other things I'm doing, from regional planning to redevelopment downtown. I work well with Mike and with his staff, and kind of the whole economic development piece that ties into even the airport and the commission I sit on with the airport and my, you know, knowledge with travel and the travel industry and how that affects tourism and redevelopment, I think are all important things to work together, so I'd be interested.
I actually think, looking at what I have, especially with the health one that's going to be large, I think I'm going to, I'll just pull my name off, and I think Charlene did a great job, I actually am very interested, so I will be at the meetings and please, and then even in two years, maybe you don't want to be on there, and I, you know, maybe at that point, but I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
See how that works?
I just...
Works pretty well. See, that goes to Christopher?
No, that goes to Charlene.
Charlene, lost my head. So what's next?
That's what I said, why doesn't Chris and Donald have a talk? They both have their names on both committees, and maybe one will say, could I have this one, or you have the other one?
Okay, the first, what's the first one there?
Redevelopment Agency Vice Chair between Donald Abbott and Christopher Dare.
And what's the other one?
Truckee River Flood Management Authority Board of Directors, alternate, again between Donald Abbott and Christopher Dare.
What's the process here, gentlemen?
That deal?
Deal, how's that, Cheryl?
I think that'll work.
Okay. So, now we've got these all parked in their own garages, right? So, in theory, I'm just talking while you're doing that. So in theory, if we go down each one and ask the person if that's what they want, they can say yes, and at the end of all this, we can have one vote on all six of those, is this five of those, six of those, is that okay, or do you want to have one on each person?
I think it's at your discretion, it might be cleaner with one on each person.
Yeah, you're right, it would be clearer, okay. Tell me when you're ready to go there, dear.
Okay, just read off the list.
Yeah.
For each person, you already voted on yours, so I'll move to Donald Abbott.
Yeah, that's fine.
Debt Management Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Regional Planning Governing Board, alternate, Reno Sparks Joint Sewer Committee Coordinating Committee, Sewer Appeals Committee, Washoe County Senior Services Board of Trustees, Western Regional Water Commission, appointed by Sparks, Truckee River Flood Management Authority Board of Directors, alternate.
Good with that, Donald?
Sir.
Okay, looking for motion?
Move to approve.
No second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Bybee, and the first to approve Mr. Abbott's commission. Any further discussion? Please vote. Please vote again.
I'm trying.
Passed unanimously.
Come on, come on.
Okay, next, Mr. Lawson.
Okay, Legislative Team, Sparks Tourism and Marketing Committee, Tourism Facilities and Revitalization Steering Committee.
Okay, Ed.
Yep.
Looking for motion?
Move to approve.
Or second?
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Bybee to approve Mr. Lawson's boards and commissions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously, Mr. Smith.
Has been voted on, so I'll move to Charlene.
Was there any changes in his...
No, I didn't add anything.
They're all highlighted, so that means we voted on.
Perfect, yeah.
They've been voted on, okay, find the problem, Ms. Bybee.
Okay, Capital Funding Protection Committee, Oversight Committee for School Facilities, Regional Planning Governing Board, Redevelopment Agency Chair, Regional Transportation Commission, alternate two, Tourism Facilities and Revitalization Steering Committee, and Edon Board of Directors.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Lawson to approve Ms. Bybee's commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, okay, next, Mr. Dare.
Capital Funding Protection Committee, Oversight Committee for School Facilities, Debt Management Commission, alternate, Regional Transportation Commission, alternate one, Reno Sparks Joint Sewer Coordinating Committee, alternate, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, alternate, Washoe County District Board of Health, Western Nevada Development District, alternate, and Redevelopment Agency Vice Chair.
Good there, President. Moving for motion? Second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve Mr. Dare's vote. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. We, Mr. Driscoll?
Mayor, we're done with that item, yeah.
You know, Cindy, that was awesome. This is the best it's ever been with these boards and commissions, and thank you all for giving and taking, and, you know, we've got a lot of work to do coming up, and I appreciate everybody stepping up and doing what they need to do. It's going to be, legislature is coming up, it's going to be a tough session, we're going to need to put our heads together and make sure we get things done we need to. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council and mayor, as you know, in our monthly PMI schedules, one of the things that we do is we list these boards and commissions on the final page of that report. One of the things that we'll be looking for is we will look at our records between now and the January meetings, since we're going to cancel our December PMIs for the holiday, and we'll do the best we can to note where the meetings reside as days of months to what we have, and then we'll work with you to get that solidified so we just have a little better record in our book, because there's some that have just changed, others that are called the chair, so they don't really have a specific date, but we'll just do that to try to keep shoring this up for you. This process, a couple of cycles ago, was nowhere close to as organized as it is, and the two people in front of you spent a lot of time and a lot of effort getting the big book together and organizing it so that they can provide you the best service as possible, so I want to thank them publicly for the hard work they've done, and I want to thank the council for this, just really kind of stream, helping to streamline this process. I thought it went very well.
You know, I just want to say one more thing, I'm so proud of this council, I cannot believe it, I'm proud of the council we just got to do with, we had two people who are gone, we had two new ones who, you know, you both stepped up to the plate, I love to see that. Give and take, you know, we're a group that's going to work well together, and if, you know, if we stick together, even though we have some disagreements, let me tell you, we'll be very powerful in this region for a long, long time. I'm old, getting ready to go, you guys are young, getting ready to take over, so I am just so darn proud of this whole council, this whole organization, the managers, the city staff. It's no wonder they don't put us in the paper for doing bad stuff, we're just good. So, Mr. Lawson?
Something that was pointed out by Councilman Smith today is we have the three oldest-serving elected officials.
Longest, longest-serving, not oldest.
Yeah.
Longest and oldest.
And oldest, yeah.
In the county.
Serving in the whole county. Out of 17 elected local officials, Gino is the longest-serving, Ron Smith is the second, and I'm actually number three.
On the same board?
On the same, and at the local level, period.
Mr. Mayor's been on a board for a long time.
Yeah, but he was, he'd been on a different board, so, but in serving for the same entity, we have the three oldest, so we got some strong leadership, some big shoes that we need to keep filling, and we're expecting big things out of our new council members.
Absolutely, you know, just keep charging forward, getting things done, making decisions, not asking for 17 studies we don't need. Just keep moving forward and approving things, helping staff, listen to staff, they're professionals, they know what they're doing, and all we got to do is listen and back them up and tell them what we think, and, you know, we're going to be fine, I'm just, I'm just proud. Thank you so much. Public, nothing, planning, zoning, nothing, comments from the public? Anyone comments from the public? Comments from the City Council and/or the city manager?
A good one.
Mr. Smith?
Update from Adam this week, Pyramid McCarran, if you're traveling through that intersection this week, expect 30-minute delays, so that's important, don't get mad, try to find another route.
Just get even.
Christmas tree lighting this Friday night at 6:30, it's going to actually be lit?
Starts at 6:00?
Festivities start before that?
Six o'clock.
That's the lighting, what time do festivities start?
The lighting's at 6:30.
Okay, good, all right.
The tree lighting's 6:30.
And we're there 5:00, 5:30, Smith? Okay, and then the parade is Saturday, and that's 1:00?
Lights at 7:00 or 6:30? Okay, good. Parade, 1:00, we have to be down there, is there going to be rides, please, from City Hall to the float? Got it, I think, from Adam?
We got it, yeah.
Okay, good, anything else? Go ahead, Christopher.
On the 9th and 10th of December, also 39 North, downtown North Pole's going to be happening, and so they're still putting things together, even today, we just got a nice donation from Western Village that stepped in and supporting it as well, and so we're just excited that what's happening down there, it's, if you don't know what it is, they're actually trying to create a whole village area that's a bunch of lights and a bunch of businesses coming together. They're even having a lot of the floats that are from the parade, they're going to come and actually join it, so it kind of even adds to the festivities, and instead of it being over in the parking lot, it's going to be at the plaza. They have a tent filled with a lot of different things you can buy for Christmas, Christmas shopping and all that stuff, you have kids singing Christmas carols, and Santa will be there on the 9th and 10th, so bring your kids down, and it'll be a great time.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll?
Mr. Mayor, I have two announcements today. The first is for committee appointments for the Western Nevada Development District, two members for two-year terms. Applications for this will be open until Friday, January 13th of 2017. The second is for the Committee on Airport Noise Advisory Panel, one member for two years. Applications for this committee will be open until close of business on Friday, December 2nd. For persons that are interested in serving on either of these committees, they should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. You would click on City Services on the webpage, and you would click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
I just wanted to tell everyone, on Saturday, if you want to make it a full day, come down to all the festivities on Victorian Square, watch the parade, and then at 5:30 Saturday night, the Nugget is lighting their Christmas tree, and it's starting to open up, so it looks better. It's kind of, it was all bunched up, and I just drove by, and it's starting to open, and they will have, if you haven't gone online, we just got information a few days ago about the 12 nuggets at Christmas, so every night for 12 nights, I think it's an amazing thing, I want to acknowledge the Nugget for being a great community partner, because each night they will have, give a $2,000 check to an individual charity, and if you go on and find that information, it's everything from toys to tots, to the food bank, to a variety of different, Humane Society, that you can bring a certain item, either cash or toys or, and it'll tell you on that, so an opportunity for everyone to bring family down, hot chocolate, and presentations every night at 5:30 at that, at the 105-foot Christmas tree. So just wanted to thank the Nugget for their community giving during the holiday season, and encourage people to participate and go check it out, I think it's awesome and complements what we're doing, the City of Sparks is doing on Saturday, so hope to see a lot of people there.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further, the business, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting on this Monday, November 28th, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott? Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Vice Chair Dare?
Here.
Assistant Agency Attorney Ivey?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a court, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Public comment, do I have any cards for public comment? Or anyone wants to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item 4.1, looking for an approval of today's agenda, do I have any changes, corrections? Not corrections, changes. Moved to approve by Agency Member Lawson, approved by Agency Member Smith, all those in favor, please vote. We're voting, we got a vote now.
Holding macro.
Yeah, it's like official.
The mayor has left the building.
Okay. Okay, we have four votes in favor, motion passes. Item number 5.1, minutes, need a motion to, any corrections, additions to the minutes? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Motion to approve by Agency Member Lawson?
Now, second?
Second by Agency Member Dare. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please vote.
Still in the favor.
Still, yeah.
Okay, once again, passes four with an abstention or one no vote. Moving to item number six. Item number 6.1, report of claims and bills for payment?
Move to approve.
For possible action, do we have? Okay, so we don't have a presentation on that? Okay. So seeing no questions, I see a motion on the floor by Agency Member Lawson, do I have a second?
It was Smith.
Oh, Smith?
Then Lawson's second.
Okay, Smith moved, Lawson seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote. Okay, motion carries, four to one. Okay. We have item number 6.2, consideration and possible approval amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement, AC-SRA 308, between the Redevelopment Agency, the City of Sparks, and SWD Quarry FVS LLC, to extend the deadlines for closing escrow and commencing construction on the agency mixed-use parcels APN 032-341-22 and APN 032-341-23, and I have Armando and Ellis, or Nellis making a presentation, this is companion to what we just saw before council, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the agency board, this is the companion item to the item heard by the City Council and approved by the City Council. Both the agency and the city are parties, so both requires approval of both.
Move to approve?
Okay. I have a motion by Agency Member Lawson, a second, Agency Member Smith, do I have any